Our meeting is now called to order. You need items from the public. Good morning. Please state your name, please.
Good morning. I'm Margaret Kersey. I'm the Director of the Martinsburg Initiative. And I had something on my heart today that I just, I wanted to come and share with you. The Martinsburg Initiative is a police, school, community, health, and education partnership. And our mission is to prevent substance use, to build strong families, and to empower the community. And we serve not just Martinsburg, but we serve all of Berkeley County. And we have ten school-based social workers. We had ten. And we have several police social workers. And I want to start by giving just a little bit of background. In 2020, the Martinsburg Initiative began the conversation and began the discussion about police social work. And under the leadership of Noel Canelis, we began police social work with the Martinsburg Police Department. We started with one social worker and we grew into three now. We, Berkeley County Sheriff's Department, along the same timeframes, began to be thinking about a police social worker. And Noel collaborated with them. We shared our policies. We shared our memorandum of understanding. We shared our training. We shared a lot of the work that we do in the field of police social work with the sheriff and the newly hired Sheriff's Department social worker. So we had that amazing relationship. On February 1st, one of our school social workers, Melody Cook. It was a Saturday. She was in her car. Melody served Mill Creek and Bunker Hill Schools. And Melody was in her car. Her husband was in her car with her, although they were separated at the time. And their ten-year-old daughter was with them as well. They were in the north end of town, and whatever was happening in that car wasn't good. And Melody was a problem solver. So what Melody did was she drove to the state police barracks looking for help. They made it to the parking lot there, and in that parking lot, Melody's husband shot her, killed her, and killed himself. The ten-year-old child was in the car with them. 911 was called, and the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department responded. They brought their social worker. When they got to the scene, their social worker, Alexis Worley, comforted and helped the child of our social worker in this unflappable tragedy. And I want to publicly thank Alexis for taking care of our social worker. So Alexis. And I also want to thank the Sheriff's Department for the vision of trauma-informed response and trauma-informed policing. And Alexis, that was a tragedy that no one would ever have expected in our community. But it did. It happened. And when you think about the connections between the social workers and the agencies and the organizations, it's, I just don't have words for how just amazing it was that on the day that our social worker needed someone the most, and her child needed someone the most, that your social worker was there for her. So I wanted to, I brought a little something with me for Alexis. And Melody was a school social worker at the two schools. And in her office, there was this game. It was January, so they were playing with mittens. And on one of the mittens that was laying on her table that she worked with children was a saying that says, "One bad thing happened, but there were good parts too." And what I would like to say from this is that this was a horrible, bad thing that happened, but, but the good part was that Alexis was there. So Alexis, I just want to thank you. And again, thank you very much for your support of this incredibly amazing program. Thank you, Alexis.
And thank you for that. That's very kind to come in and recognize Alexis. But it's also, that's very difficult work. And a lot of times, timing is critical of receiving that help, not only for the victims, but quite honestly, for our staff as well that have to encounter these emergencies. PTSD is real. Those, those things travel with that person. They travel with their families. So if we can keep our, not only our public, help to keep our public healthy, but also help keep our employees healthy, it makes for a much better work environment, works a much better family atmosphere. So those things are important, and the work that you do is very important to a lot of people. Sometimes we don't see it, and we don't hear it, but we know what's going on, and thank you for what you do. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
During our budget process, the sheriff, we work with the Sheriff's Department very closely on, you know, what is your priorities? And Alexis, you're one of the top, is the sheriff's top priority, believe me. He understands the need for this. Hopefully, in the future, we can even expand this. That's what we hope.
Sure. I appreciate that, and I'd like to be able to take credit for that. But after Pacman and his team, when I first started as sheriff, brought to my attention the things that they were doing with CIT and different things, and how critical it was that, that we hire this position. And I credit him and his team. And I'm just a little bit smart enough to understand when you have a talented person. They did, they interviewed a lot of people for this position. And she stood out. She just, she just stood out amongst all of them. And I will say that it's comforting to me to know that if there's a situation happening in the community with our officers, then she has the green light to go, and she does not hesitate to respond to these things. Just like Margaret said, you know, she, she, she was there at a time when one of her people needed it, and she'd be here for anyone in this room. And I just, I give the credit to my people because they were working on this before I was appointed sheriff. And then it was one of my first priorities, hearing what they wanted to do. And I think it was the best hire I could have made. And I appreciate all support on this.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda for May 8, 2025.
Show move.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Any questions on the purchase order law? There are none? We do have internal budget revisions, Gary?
Yes, sir. You have two. The first one is from Clerk Petrucci from Department 413 with his voter's registration, asking for your approval to move $3,000 from his publishing line item to his materials and supplies line item. And the second one, also from Clerk Petrucci in his voter's registration department, to move $3,000 from his printing line item to his materials and supplies line item.
Very good. We have a change of status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Community Corrections Director for Crystal Landis, has a DRC peer recovery coach effective 5/19/25 with an annual salary of $43,135. Approval of the minutes, May 1, 2025. Everybody was here. We do have one correction on the minutes. On Brian Ross's presentation, that was 18,000 inspections, not permits. If we can make that correction. Also, Engineer Doug Smith brings before us this morning bond reductions for Foxtail Mills, lots 199, lots 1 through 99, and that's for grading. That's BCP number 2504-121. That's tied to 2504-120, number 2403-072, and 2408-0037. That's bond number 7469897. And engineering is making that recommendation. Have a bond reduction for Foxtail Mills Phase 3. This is for final. Lots 46 through 52 and 81 through 91. That's BCP number 2504-127. That's tied to 2504-126, number 2403-072, and number 2501-016, bond number X1290374-2185. Engineering makes that recommendation. Bond reduction for Foxtail Mills Phase 1 final. That's lots 1 through 16, 31 through 35, 92 through 99. And that's BCP number 2504-123. And that's tied to number 24, 2504-122, and number 2403-072, and 2409-274. That's bond number LX290343-2185-00. Next one, bond reduction to the Woods 2, Section 20, Phase 2, lots number 41 through 55, grading and final. That's BCP 2504-098. That's tied to 2504-092, number 90-04, and 2504-0205, bond number 100856798. And engineering makes that recommendation. Do I have a question for Doug? Very good. Thank you. I need a motion to approve or disapprove the agenda.
Show move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. There's nothing from the assessor this week. Board and meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Well, this week I didn't have any meetings. It's a quiet week.
Good week.
Yeah.
Let's get them. I had several meetings, mostly on Tuesday. And one, we spent two and a half hours at the airport with the ambulance authority staff and several other board members. And we did a strategic planning session for the future of the ambulance authority. And I, I want to say that, you know, our ambulance authority is in really good shape, and they do a wonderful job for the citizens of Berkeley County. And I appreciate the board that serves, the folks that serve on that board, and I appreciate the staff and people we have trying to keep our county safe and answering the call. You know, they have 16,000 calls a year, of which 8,500 are transports. And the total budget now for the ambulance authority is about $9 million a year. It's split almost half and half, where four and a half million is from the fees that we have in place, the county fees, fire, excuse me, ambulance fees. And as you all know, we incorporated a non-residential fee for the first time ever about a year ago. And it's bringing in about $600,000 of that 4.5 million. The other half of the money comes from the charges that they do when they do transports to insurance companies and so forth. And so they're, they're working on a $9 million budget. And of course, we currently have seven new ambulances that are coming that we've been needing for several years now that have been held back because of the situation nationwide. And, and so they're, they're going to be in great shape here in the next few months with that situation as well. So also, on Tuesday evening, we had a sewer board meeting. And all the projects are going well there. The large project, of course, is the plant at Woods Resort. And it should be up and running sometime this month, is the hope, so. And then our storm order meeting, continued frustration with the West Virginia DEP in regards to our individual permit that we've been requesting. We're going to have a conference call here later today or tomorrow with our attorney in Charleston to address that, whether to continue to go after our individual permit or wait on the statewide general permit. So we're trying to understand what that's going to mean and which is the less of two evils here. But certainly, we feel strongly that whichever way we go, there's going to be more scrutiny on enforcement of storm order than there has in the past. And it's going to cause, obviously, more, more cost to people to build. So we'll, we'll see how that shakes out. But hopefully, we'll get something in hand so that we can move forward with, with that, that program. And other than that, that's, I had some other meetings, but we'll talk about that at another time.
Very good. I actually had only one scheduled meeting, and then kind of one that slid in between. But met yesterday with the leadership of the Water District. They're working on the 42-inch line that's coming out of the new water plant, the existing water plant. It's a new, new line coming out that will come up through along the railroad tracks and eventually to, at least to Beddington Road. and eventually to, at least to Bradenton Road for right now. That's also the same line that will be feeding to CMC Steel, off of that, they, I think, are taking a 12-inch line or 16-inch line off of that to go into the mill, so they're asking for this to be expedited so they can get some of their equipment commissioned as they continue to, to build. The other meeting that I had with the Development Authority resulted with the conversation of Harold Drive, in which I'd like to thank Commissioner Catley and Commissioner Boyd for their conversations that they had with Secretary Robal in Charleston, it's, they've kind of tried to make Harold Drive one of the priorities in Berkeley County, unfortunately there's no funding attached to it, but we did meet with a couple of the landowners yesterday to speak about right-of-way's that would, you know, that will be necessary in the ability to move forward. You know, obviously with the Development Authority, they're not going to support any type of residential growth in that area, it would be for commercial growth to expand the tax base and to create jobs, so that was a very good discussion, there will be letters of support sent to the governor's office as well as the Department of Highways in support of the extension of Harold Drive, so that's, that was pretty much that meeting.
Me add something to that, while we're on that topic, I want to thank Richard Dennis, who's back in the audience here, working for the governor and he's hooked me up with the appropriate people to try to schedule a meeting directly with the governor about the road projects, we presented probably six or seven different projects in Berkeley County, we've got attention going now in regards to those, also, we've got letters of support to send to our senators, states, our United States Senators, Capito and Justice in support of federal funding for several of these projects, so we do have their ear right now and I just appreciate the fact that when we were there this year, we were heard, we were there in the past and we felt like we were never heard and this time it seems like we were and he promised, Rumball promised that he would relay the message to the governor and he has and so hopefully we'll get some attention and some action and it's all good stuff, we need help here dramatically for our road situation in Berkeley County, so I appreciate you, Richard, and, and everybody involved, so.
When he, when we were talking about trying to make Harold Drive, you know, one of the priorities, I told him that, look, we cannot have this conversation and not involve Route 9 West as a priority in Berkeley County as well, so, you know, to the folks that are listening, you know, we, every opportunity we have, we're, we're trying to make, to encourage the state to make these investments locally in our highways. So we have a reappointment packet received from Daniel Grant for the Planning Commission, his term will expire 5/23/25. John serves on the Planning Commission, so I'd like to wait for that appointment, Lynn Leatherman on the airport reappointment package there also, which Mr. Whitaker serves on that one, so we can delay that one also, as well as Greg Rowe from the Water District, which John sits on that as well, but we do have the reappointment packet received from Don Silvius and Richard Trenary, Richard Trenary for the Museum Commission, that, that term expires June 30/25, are you prepared to make that today?
I'm prepared to make that motion to, make a motion to approve the extension for both Don Silvius and Richard Trenary to the museum board.
Thank you.
I would second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. And next up, last week, we interviewed David Scott Wilson and Kenneth Laymaster for the Civil Service Commission to the sheriff's office, what's your discretion?
I, I was ready to make a motion that we add Scott Wilson to that position.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? Only, only part of the discussion is I appreciate the interest, you know, served by former sheriff's Laymaster, still wanting to be involved, appreciate that and then properly moved and seconded to appoint Scott Wilson as our next commissioner to the Civil Service Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
It, it felt good to have quality candidates for the position, you know.
Sure, well, they've, they've been on both sides of it.
Appreciate the fact that they're willing to serve our community, thank you, Scott.
And I have a new application received from Joyce Keys for the Building Commission and that, I would like to have a, a motion to appoint her today because we've got some work coming up real soon, so if somebody would make that motion for me?
I would, to interview?
No, to, just to make the appointment, yes.
Okay, I, I would, I would move to do that, yeah. Joyce Keys?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay, Commissioner Catley, I work for Honorary County Commissioner, where we have Mia Fitzwater and Tristan Fur.
Yeah.
Mia is from South Middle and Tristan is from Mountain Reeves Middle.
It's Maya, Maya Fitzwater. We'll get it right, stand up, Maya, and come on over here.
I'll do that.
Tristan? Yeah, how are you? What school are you from?
Uh, Mountain Reeves.
Mountain Reeves, we had your second student, Maya, it's good to see you. You know, this, a couple of weeks ago, I got to swear in my oldest granddaughter and it was such a privilege for me to do that and her best friend is Maya Fitzwater, okay? Her, her paternal grandfather is a great friend of mine from, you know, a long time, we coached Little League together and our sons grew up playing ball with each other and against each other. Her maternal grandfather is a great friend of mine, that used to run pools for me, Rick Duel, the principal of Martinsburg High School for years, that's her paternal grandfather, so she's a special kid and a special, my granddaughter's best friend, so it's an honor for me to swear her in today and what I'm going to do is get you to both, to do it together, okay? You raise your right hand, let's, let's get over here in front of this thing a little better, take a good picture.
Did you get them both to face the audience?
Yeah, can you, can I talk over here?
Perfect.
I know it's, it's, it's difficult to get close to me, I get that. But anyway, raise your right hand and aye and state your name. Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will uphold?
I will uphold.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia?
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard?
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities of the office?
To fulfill the responsibilities of the office.
Of honorary commissioner?
Honorary commissioner.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very great, let's, officially now honorary member of the commission today and we have two missing, so we get back to five now with you two here, so, now you can't vote yet, but if you do want to say something, then get HD's or Penny's attention and we're with you, feel free to, we had a hard time last week keeping the two people from falling asleep, they were so bored, so hopefully it'll be exciting for you today and it is an honor to be here, believe me, so, and so we have this honorary certificate for you, Tristan Fur and for you, Maya and later on, we'll set through a little bit more of the meeting and then we'll have a picture ceremony out here, but now we want you to take time and tell us a little bit about yourself to the audience here.
I'm Tristan Fur, I plan on going to the Air Force whenever I get out of high school and I'm going to do Berettis C next year.
And you'll go to Mussumon High School?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Hi, I'm Mike Fitzwater and I'm in the eighth grade at South Middle School, I dance at Berkeley Center for Dance and I plan to go to Martinsburg High School and after high school, I plan to go to college to get my nursing degree.
And I'll have to say this, she was just selected to the philosophy dance team at Martinsburg High School for next year, along with my granddaughter too. They're going to get to dance together for the next four years at Martinsburg High School. I don't miss a recital or anything and I can't wait to watch them perform at the high school, but thank you all for being here and just sit down and we'll, you have to sit through a little bit more of the meeting, then we'll have a picture thing when we take a break, right?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Well, my real on the money here, next up, we have a bid opening for drug screening cups.
Yes, sir, you, you do have certification and publication, it was on the website, distributed to known vendors and I believe you had 20 responses.
Wow.
Steve, I'll play Mr. Whitaker.
That has a record.
If you'll, if you'll write the numbers on them, right?
20's the, the number, that's a record.
I think so. One of them was a phone bill, we did have 21, so we took that one back.
You're right?
I don't know, I guess, I guess that's just a copy of that.
You have two of them there, Eddie, the first one I handed you.
You have two, that's the first one.
There's nothing there, this is it, it's empty.
This is where they...
See if they follow directions. Should be, copy, you mean, and we'll see. Just have a, should be a...
OVUS Medical, OVUS Medical, out of Boynton Beach, Florida, total amount per quarter is $16,740 and price per cup is $2.79. Second quote is OV, DLG International Group, per unit is $4.15. They are out of California and I can't read what they wrote.
This is a real exciting part of the meeting too for you students here.
They are, they are out of...
That really got your attention.
Urban California.
I guess I should first put the, was that two?
Number three, yeah.
This one out of Knoxville, Tennessee, TM Scientific, the total amount is $35,186, per unit is $2.38. Number four, out of Orlando, Florida.
Got mouse ears on it.
Wish I did, I found the numbers. $3.25 per unit, $19,500 per quarter. Number five, $3.10 per unit, $18,600, that's per 6,000 per quarter, Boca Raton, Florida, and that's US, E U S, E U I T LLC. Number six. This is TNT Fibromy, An infusion LLC, out of Bruton, Alabama, $6.46 per unit, $38,893.64. Number seven is LMSI LLC, doing business as Lighthouse Labs, out of Charlotte, North Carolina, $3.97 per unit.
Must be a southern thing, right? Florida, Alabama, North Carolina.
Shreveport, Louisiana.
There we go.
Precision Plus, that's American Screening LLC, out of Shreveport, Louisiana, $2.20 per unit, $13,200 total amount. Number nine. Out of Glen Allen, Virginia. Haven't found the name of the company yet, there we are, Abertest LLC, doing business as Aver Health, Aver Health, I'm sorry, A V E R Health, out of Glen Allen, Virginia, $3.90 per unit. Number 10, Keston Medical Surgical Government Solutions LLC, out of Henrico, Virginia, $3.76 per unit, $22,560 total amount. Number 11.
Hey, Gary?
Out of National Test Systems, out of Boca Raton, Florida, $2.70 per unit, $16,200 per 6,000 tests.
They've double sealed that, you get a pin with that one? Yeah. It's broken already, haven't even used it yet, better get it out before it leaks.
Number 12, Rosewood Technology Laboratories, out of Santa Rosa, California, $1.92 per unit, $2.19, that includes shipping, so shipping is 27 cents per unit.
You know, that was a question I was going to ask, do these include shipping or not?
Some do.
Especially the cheaper ones.
Yeah, some do.
That makes a big difference and not get for shipping.
Please you'll figure it out, I promise you.
This is number 13, Cadet Co LLC, out of Wheeling, West Virginia, that's $3.69 per unit, shipping is 990 cases per 100. Bradenton, Florida, Medical Distribution Group Incorporated, out of Bradenton, Florida, and that's $3.36 per unit, $20,148 for total. I will say they did a very nice presentation there.
I would say, you even had a free pin with it.
Well, they sealed it up well, too.
Number 15.
You don't want that pin to get out.
Buffalo, New York, Loch Ness Medical Supplies, $3.50 per unit, for 6,000 cups, that would be $21,000. Number 16, Indianapolis, Indiana, that's Technical Resource Management LLC, doing business as Corded Health Solutions, and that's $3.85 per unit, with shipping for the 100 or more, then it would take it to 405. With shipping for the hundred or more, then it would take it to four oh five.
This one's in a bio bag.
Don't open it. Bio bag. Next up, First Trans LLC, at Oak Park, Illinois. Sixteen cents per cup, one thousand and ten dollars. I guess that's for six thousand per quarter. Eighteen.
We were one less... The other one is a check payable to us, so...
Did not tie the record.
Microgenics Corporation, out of Fremont, California. That's three dollars and twenty cents per box of twenty-five. Their quote was for six thousand units. Next up is... Ontec Incorporated, out of San Diego, California. At four dollars and ninety-five cents per unit, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred for six thousand. Glad we made it through that. Appreciate all the interest of the different vendors. All right, next up, Randy Lilly, Emergency Services Director. Come on up, Rand. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. How are you doing this morning?
Good.
Good.
I bring before you a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding between the Berkeley County Office of Emergency Management and the Berkeley Morgan County Board of Health. We have always worked very well together with our health department. Unfortunately, I hear rumors from other counties, emergency management people talking about the lack of cooperation and communication with the health department. Fortunately, here in Berkeley County, we do not have that issue. We have always worked very well together, supported each other, communicated. We've had a great partnership relationship. But the MOU just basically puts what we've been doing in the past, puts it in writing, in black and white. Nothing in the MOU is outside of anything we have done in the past and will continue to do to support each other to, in collaboration, to support our community members. So I bring the MOU before you for authorization, signature, and adoption for that MOU.
This is something that's never been done yet, but it's been in place, but we've never had it in writing.
We've never had it in writing, that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, that's what the MOU putting in writing is about. We've always supported each other, been there for each other, communicated very well together. They're very active in our LEPC.
They've been a great partner, you know. Go back to the very trying time of the pandemic. Our local health department employees and the leadership there were extremely valued and very knowledgeable and helped to lead us through that time period, which is a very difficult time because it was kind of unknown. And you're right, Rand, on those calls with the other emergency managers at that time, they criticized and complained about their local health departments almost on every call. And that was not our position. We had a great working relationship with them. They understood our needs, especially for our first responders, and tried to help accommodate that. So it's been a real good working relationship.
Yes, it has, and we intend to continue that partnership and relationship.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Randy on this? If not, I need a motion to approve the MOU.
I would make that motion. I'll second.
You're properly moving. Seconding and further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have... Thank you, Rand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Caitlin Lipson from Mountain Heart Community Services and Childcare Provider Appreciation Month. Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing today?
Wonderful.
Good.
You two think it's nerve-wracking to sit there, try being on this side.
Oh, it's... It's all good. It's good.
I was on that side for forty-five years, ma'am, and it's not fun.
And actually, I'm kind of a substitute. My supervisor, Caitlin, was not able to leave the office today, so I got tapped to be here. My name's Katharina Hegedorn, and I am here to let you know a little bit about Mountain Heart and to read a proclamation of Childhood Care Providers Appreciation Day, which is held in May. Mountain Heart is the community contract agency from DHOS. Have to slow down on that one. What we do is we do the eligibility for families that are working or in school or having some type of training program to see if they are eligible economically and activity-wise. And we then, if they are, approve them, give them a certificate, and then the state will pay for part of their childcare costs. So that allows a lot of our families in the area to be able to work further their education, do all types of, you know, activities, be positive and productive in our community. We support the childcare providers, which include not just childcare centers, but also in-home childcare providers by providing trainings to help them to become better at working with young children and understanding the young children and supporting that early childhood education piece, which we know is very... That's the foundation upon which everything else for everyone's lives comes up from. So, you know, we do a lot of those things. Another small branch that we have that I'm particularly proud of because I'm the one that manages it is that we sponsor and run the VIDA program, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program in the county, and we actually cover eight counties in West Virginia. But that program allows income-eligible people under sixty-five thousand dollars to have their taxes done by a volunteer who is knowledgeable, trained in everything in the IRS, and have those taxes done for free. So, Mountain Heart has kind of a broad range of different programs that we offer in the community. But the biggest thing we are proud of is our childcare providers. Are there any childcare providers in the room today? This is for them. Okay? So, May ninth is Provider Appreciation Day. It was established in nineteen ninety-six to honor the dedication of childcare providers. Celebrated annually on the Friday before Mother's Day, it acknowledges those who nurture young children despite facing significant challenges, such as low wages and a lack of benefit. Providers play a vital role in children's development. We appreciate your willingness to listen, guide, inspire, encourage, and simply be present. Most importantly, thank you for being a vital part of a child's journey. Mountain Heart Community Services expresses deep gratitude to these essential childcare providers for their commitment to nurturing and educating children. I do have, if it would be appropriate, a packet on the services that Mountain Heart provides in the community and how we support childcare providers for each of you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And yes, there are two pens in front of us.
Thank you.
Where's your office?
We are located on Lutz Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the proclamation.
You move? I'd second that.
Proper movement, seconding and further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Okay. Takes us down to our break, our morning break. So, let's take a brief break, get some pictures. All right, we're back in session. And next up is Allison Ellis, the Senior Vice President of Business Development for Frontier. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having us today. So I'm Allison Ellis. I'm with Frontier and we're here today to provide you an update on our Berkeley MBPS grants. First off, just want to thank you again for your support in securing this grant funds. It's really important to help us bring fiber to some of those locations throughout the county that are more difficult to reach because they're more remote, higher cost locations. I thought what I'd do is kind of give you a really quick snapshot of where Frontier is today, and then we can go through and talk about some specific project specifics. I would also like to introduce Mark McKenzie, who's with me here today. He is our Chief Engineer for the state of West Virginia.
McKenzie?
Yes, McKenzie.
They asked you for your phone number, be careful, Mark.
Mark is really the technical expert, so he can answer any questions.
Which one do we complain to?
You can complain to both of us. But I will tell you, when people get our fiber services, we're more commonly get accolades versus complaints.
I'm one of those remote customers that's waiting on your services.
Well, we want to bring it to you. We want to bring it to you. So certainly after, I'm happy to take anybody's address and sort of look at what the future plans are for locations. As I was saying about Mark, Mark is really the one who is managing the projects, the actual projects of getting the fiber out into the field, the personnel who are doing that. And so, you know, he plays a really critical role in our ability to bring fiber to more of West Virginia. So maybe just to start at the high level, you know, obviously you know the name Frontier. We've been a provider in the state for, well, really since 2010. We, you know, historically provided broadband service through DSL technology. We all recognize that DSL technology has, you know, continued to get, have more difficulty supporting the higher bandwidth uses that are commonplace today for consumers. And so that's really one of the reasons that we made this company-wide shift to fiber technology. And we are totally focused on deploying fiber to the premises, you know, as quickly as we can to as many locations as is feasible. We made a public goal in 2021 to pass 10 million locations across our 25-state footprint by the end of 2026. We're solidly on our way there. So far, we've already passed about 8 million locations. West Virginia is a big part of that story because it is one of two states in our 25-state footprint where we cover essentially 100% of the state. So there's really an opportunity for us to make a really meaningful impact in this state, whereas in other states, you know, we have maybe more of a shotgun look to our infrastructure. In the 2020-2021 timeframe, you know, we totally changed our senior leadership. We welcomed a new Board of Directors, a new CEO, and all of our senior leaders are new. Let me tell you, I've worked for the company since 2010. It's the most sophisticated board and management of the company that we've ever had. And I think when you look at our success of deploying fiber, you can see that they really have what it takes in order to shepherd the company through this period of tremendous expansion. And just maybe some highlights from our last quarter public results. You know, we've built fiber to more than 4.6 million new locations since 2021. Last quarter, it was 321,000 locations. We are averaging about that per quarter, so we are passing more than a million locations per year across our footprint. We have positive revenue growth in Q1 2025. You know, that's really, a really important metric because of course, the more revenue we generate, the more money that we have to reinvest in our operations and our network. And we reached positive revenue growth in 2024 for the first time in our company's history in growth that was not acquisition-related. And I should say, in our company's history since about 2010. We also added 107 fiber broadband customers in Q1. That's a 19% increase year over year amongst our industry. You know, this is a very healthy number. To maybe put it also in perspective, Frontier is roughly an $8 billion company, and we are deploying fiber as fast as, faster than every other company in the nation except for AT&amp;T. And AT&amp;T is about $140 billion company, so we're right behind them, but we're a much smaller company. It really speaks to the fiber deployment machine that Mark and his counterparts have built across the country. We also regularly get recognized now for our good service, which is something we are very proud of, given that we recognize we have had some service challenges with our DSL service in the past. I think everyone knows the benefits of fiber and why we are all investing in fiber, so I won't go through these, other than to say there are two important characteristics. The first is fiber is the future-proof technology. We are able to introduce higher speeds using the same fiber without having to change out, you know, do new construction in the field. So when we were first deploying fiber in West Virginia, we first offered, you know, our maximum speed was 1 gig symmetrical, so 1,000 megabits up, 1,000 megabits down. 2002, we were the first company in the nation to introduce 2 gig symmetrical service to, you know, retail consumers. We then followed that with 5 gig symmetrical. Now our highest service offering is 7 gig symmetrical. We don't have a lot of customers on 7 gig, but it is a reflection that we are able to keep pace with the increasing demands, which are just going to continue to grow with the introduction of more artificial intelligence applications, micro distributed monitoring of networks, you know, intelligent farming applications, things like that. The other thing that I just want to point out is that fiber is a passive technology. So what that means is we have to have power in our central office and power at the end-user location, and we can deliver the data signals. DSL is not like that. DSL has to be line-powered across the entire path of the data transmission. It's one of the reasons that it's subject to interruption, because there are a lot of points of failure along that electrified path. With the fiber, again, you know, central office, these are hardened facilities, they have backup power, and then all of the equipment that is in the field is all passive technology. It does not have to be commercially powered in order to work. So it's another really positive attribute that eliminates like a very significant failure point for DSL technology. Okay, this is our footprint in West Virginia. As you can see, red is our entire footprint. Those red lines are just the boundaries of what we call our wire centers. Essentially, each wire center has its own central office, centralized point of aggregation. Depending on the size, some wire centers may have more than one. So, you know, we've spent about $1 billion in the state of West Virginia since 2021.
How much?
A billion. Yeah. I have asked, and I can't find data on another industry in this state, another company in this state that has invested more than that. So again, it's a reflection of how important West Virginia is to us as a company. We've passed more than 300,000 locations in this state. We have, you know, a very strong presence here, more than 1,400 employees. And, you know, obviously, we have the infrastructure in terms of real estate and central offices and, you know, equipment yards and things that support our operations here. To give you a sense of what our pricing looks like, you know, one of the things that we really wanted to do was to make sure that we very competitively priced our products and services, because, you know, obviously, we want to win customers, but also, we understood that particularly in places like West Virginia, you know, we had to earn customer trust. And so we have priced our gig symmetrical service at $64.99. We run promotions from time to time. I can tell you, since we first introduced that product, it's roughly been that price. Sometimes a little bit lower, sometimes a little bit higher, but it's been, you know, really very solidly in that neighborhood. You know, our 2 gig symmetrical, sometimes on promotion, is as low as $99 per month. Again, that really just changes as we look at what the market is and, you know, try to capture more customers. A benefit in the way that we do our pricing, though, is that we do our pricing on a national basis. So even if an individual in location in Berkeley County does not have a competitive provider, but, you know, competitive choice, but has Frontier Fiber, it's getting the benefit of competition because our prices are set based on markets where we have a lot of competition, like Tampa Bay, Florida, where we compete very tenaciously. We also introduced an affordable offer here, which is $29.99. This is for customers who, we did this when the ACP went away, and so it's a 200-megabit symmetrical connection. That's a really strong connection, enables you to do Zoom and Teams and all, and, you know, streaming video and gaming. When ACP discontinued, we actually made this offer available to anyone. So there's no income restrictions. You can, anyone can sign up for this service.
What customers do you have in West Virginia?
Yeah, total customers in West Virginia? I mean, we generally don't release that publicly. I will tell you that we... Do you think we passed about a million locations? Yeah? Yeah, I think we passed about a million locations. Okay, so turning to our MBPS grant. So again, thank you for your support in that grant. Our project area encompasses Hedgesville, Jaredstown, Martinsburg, Inwood, and Bunker Hill. The total project involves about 285 miles of fiber. The cost of the project is $18 million. We're contributing $10 million to that. Let me say that this is the project cost that was presented and is the, what the award of the grant is based on. I should just caveat that, you know, the project cost is accurate on the day it's submitted, and then when it takes a year or more for construction to start, you know, obviously, there've been... there've been increase in costs associated with equipment, manpower, those sorts of things. We're not asking the state or the county for any more money. I just wanted to maybe share that that 10.7 million investment under-represents what Frontier is actually investing to complete the project. We got a grant for 6.3 million, and then, of course, your contribution of $1 million from the state and local fiscal recovery funds, I believe. So that funded 2,531 locations. When we do grant project, you know, we can only use the funding that was awarded to us for the identified locations, but we do look to complement that funding with additional contribution in order to enable fiber to more locations, which we would call synergy locations, that are around at the project area but not in the project area. Again, this means additional investment for Frontier above that $10 million, but it means that we can leverage that grant to reach even more locations in Berkeley County with fiber. So just, you know, maybe in simplistic terms, if the grant-eligible location is at the end of Main Street, and we're passing first, second, and third, we will do complementary investment to run our fiber down first, second, and third, if that's feasible, to capture those locations. We're not going to just go past them and ignore them. So that's really what Mark and his team are expert at, is looking at what the grant location is, and then also looking at what the complementary opportunity around it is.
Clarify, though, this particular phase of this project is for Back Creek Valley, for the west of North Mountain.
I have a map, so I can show you on the next map. Can we maybe put a hold on that? And I'll show you on the map. I did just want to talk about the timeline, because I think, you know, there, you guys are probably frustrated, consumers, you know, constituents are probably a little bit frustrated that this process started in 2022, and, you know, it's now 2025. We're frustrated as well. I just want to share that. We, you know, we went through the RFP process with you in 2022, then the way that the state made the changes to the MBPS, that sort of introduced some delay right at the front in order to get some more funding from the state. So we actually got our award from the state in July of 2023, so a whole year later. We have spent, from July of 2023 to March of this year, trying to get our required notice to proceed with construction from the broadband office, the state broadband office. It's been months of paperwork and revised information, and, you know, we were one of the earlier grants, so I think the broadband office, you know, to give them credit, we're really trying to figure out what the right process for this was. But I did just want to share with you that, you know, we were, the project starts the day that we sign the grant agreements. We are doing work behind the scenes. We're doing all of the detailed engineering, planning, and design. We're ordering the equipment, we're, and materials, we're waiting for those to arrive. We're, you know, going through the permitting process. So it's not like nothing happened during that period of time. Everything that happened was necessary to get to the point where we are today, but it did take a long time, longer than typical, because the broadband office did not, you know, issue us the notice to proceed with construction as quickly as we would have liked.
Alison, I think it was also to acquire the right-of-ways that were necessary?
Correct. And that's the permitting, right? The permitting is getting access to the right-of-ways and the authorized easements, and that's all, you know, as you can imagine, there, there are a lot of different interests involved in, in that process. So we actually, you know, we got our notice to proceed in March, and field construction is starting, you know, now, in the May timeframe. I should also, maybe I'll have Mark talk to the difference between inside plant construction and outside plant construction, which is the field construction. You know, they, they both happen, but the inside plant happens first. So we're really now just entering the phase where we're actually going to be in the field doing the distribution fiber that is necessary to provide end-users with fiber services. And when we do that work, we open locations that we pass for sale on a rolling basis. That means we don't wait until the project is complete to bring everybody online and say, "You can order service now." We do a span of fiber, we test it, we make sure it's operational, and then we will open those locations for sale. So when we're talking about the 2,500, we're not waiting till the end of the project for, you know, 2,500 people to order service. They're going to have, you know, 100, then 200, then 500, then 1,000, you know, as we get more through the construction process. And then our target construction completion date, this is under our agreement with the state and, and you, is September 2026, because this is capital projects-funded money has to be totally completed by December of 2026.
And that happen?
Oh, yeah, for sure. And I'll let Mark speak to that. So maybe I'll invite Mark up to talk a little bit about the construction phases.
Morning. Thank you for having me.
Couple of general questions first, though.
Okay.
Nationwide, are you all east of the Mississippi, or do you, what's your coverage area?
So we're in 25 states.
25?
25.
All east of the Mississippi?
No, we, we are also in California, Nevada, Mexico, Texas, Arizona.
So you're pretty broader than I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
And my other question is, to you, you know, a lot of people have eliminated their landline phones, and how's that going to come into play in terms of getting service into those homes? Will a new line be brought into each home?
Okay.
It'll be a new line brought into each home?
It'll be a new fiber line brought into each home.
What I get these questions from the public, will it be their responsibility to get it from your line out along the road, for instance, into their home, their cost?
No. So we did, that's what we call the drop. So the drop is the fiber facility from the street and user location. We don't put that in place until the customer orders service, because we need permission, express permission, enter on private property. When the customer orders service, I mean, I think we're like around four or five days, you know, within four or five days, sometimes sooner than that. We will go out, do the fiber drop, put the, put the equipment that needs to be on the house, which is called a networking interface, or now it's called actually an O N T.
O N T?
O N T, sorry. The, the N is an O N T. And then we set up service.
And who pays for that?
We do.
Okay, the customer does not?
The customer does not. Now, the customer then would get broadband service from us, and if they wanted the voice application, they would get voice-over-IP phone service. What I will tell you about voice-over-IP is it's a much more functional and stable connection than, than the traditional landline voice connection. It's got a lot more features and functionalities, and it works just like the old phone, right? Some, some people in the past used to be concerned about having to have special equipment. They can actually just plug their phone into the wall, and it works the same. The only difference is that in a power outage, they do need to have backup battery to power their O N T, which is on the house, in order to provide service. Comes with a battery pack. The batteries are like DC batteries, so you can buy them at, you know, Walmart. And typically, what, what customers do is they have the battery, they don't keep the batteries in, right? They just go and they put the batteries in when there's a power outage so that they can then make calls.
Are you the reason I have orange paint in my front yard when I was mowing the last week?
That's, that's probably accurate. Yeah, that's probably...
That's good news for you.
I know, I thought that was the reason, but now I notice that they're identifying the utilities, water, of course, is blue, and, but I had orange paint in my yard for several weeks now.
Yeah.
And I was hoping that was going to be the fiber connection, but...
There is, there is someone doing some excavating, and that's certainly part of our project as well. As Alison mentioned, when she was talking about the timeline and the approvals from the broadband office, I do want to just reiterate what she said. My department started moving the day that we got notification from Alison's team that we had partnered with Berkeley County and that that grant was moving forward. So there has been a lot of things happening in the background from an engineering perspective and a construction perspective. The notice to proceed allowed us to do some things more in the outside plant world, but Alison mentioned it. We, we started working within our central offices in Berkeley County when we were notified of this grant. So we have to augment the core network that carries this traffic for internet access. We started detail engineering when we got notification from Alison and our grant team, which was actually boots-on-the-ground, out looking at people's addresses, and how are we going to connect those specific addresses into the fiber network. So there's been a lot that has happened since that award notification, but we are now really at the critical point that Alison mentioned a minute ago, which is outside plant construction has started. The paint in your yard, very well, depending on, on your address, and I can certainly check on that, but the paint in your yard would be a reflection of that. We have, we have contract partners in the construction world who do our underground construction. And then, of course, we have our internal Frontier technicians represented by Communication Workers of America, who will actually install the fiber optic cable. So we have started the underground portion of that work. That's typically what creates some challenges. We get right-of-ways, as you had mentioned. That part of the construction phase is pretty laborious in terms of trying not to tear up existing infrastructure, water lines. So that work has already started. You will start to see, your constituents will start to see actual Frontier construction vehicles in market as we're installing the fiber optic cable. As Alison mentioned about the rolling schedule with people being able to sign up for fiber optic service, that will actually start in July. We have about 500 locations that we have targeted that will go open for sale in July of this year, and that schedule will continue, about 500. I was looking at it last night in the hotel room. It'll be about 500 per month through the rest of 2025. In November and December, when we get into some of the winter months, we, we ramp down a little bit into maybe the 300-location range. And so when I say 300 or 500 locations, those are addresses, and those are addresses that will be qualified for fiber optic service in our database. Marketing will go out to advise those customers, and they can call and start signing up for whatever service they desire. To your point earlier, it will be a new fiber optic, we call it a drop, it'll be a new fiber optic line from our terminals that you will see out on actual telephone poles into the customer's home with a new O N T that is of no cost to the customer. So we have a schedule for 2025 that'll start in earnest in July with customers being able to order fiber service. That'll run through December, and then we'll pick back up in January and finish out the remaining areas of the grant with, as Alison mentioned, a completion deadline in December.
And it'll be a combination of overhead and underground then, as far as...
It will.
...the fiber optic itself, yeah.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Where, where I've lived over, for my last 45 years of my life, we, we had underground, when I had a landline phone, it was underground service. And so I was never subject to getting any kind of cable or anything where I lived. Small pocket of like seven or eight homes where everybody else on route nine in different places could get cable if they chose to or whatever. We couldn't, and they would never come and bury new lines to provide any service to us. So that, that'll be changed, obviously.
Yeah, and we're...
In the near future, hopefully.
And we're happy to verify any addresses that you may have. If there are addresses in question, some folks may feel, you know, am I part of it or not? We get those requests daily. We're happy to...
I think they also have a address list, which is, that certainly provides the grant, the grant-funded locations. When Mark was, you know, talking about about 500 per one, that, of course, is including grant locations and those synergy locations that we reference as well. I should also mention that for those locations, like you were talking about, where, you know, maybe it's a little bit more remote, the cost is, you know, the cost to reach that location is higher than, you know, private companies invest independently, there still is grant funding available across the state of West Virginia for those locations. You know, it's, the process is a little bit fluid at this point, but it's the lead process. There were 114, 14,000 locations identified by the West Virginia Broadband Office across the state of West Virginia. It included locations in Berkeley County that were eligible for grant funding. They have accepted applications on that. The application process is like, been, you know, really well underway. The change in administration has introduced some delay and some change, but the broadband office planned to do with respect to making grant awards. We, as an applicant for some of that funding, are working through that process with the broadband office. We don't have clarity, I think the broadband office doesn't have clarity that they're sharing publicly. But what we do know is there is going to be a significant amount of funding available and awarded at some point in 2025 for those, you know, remaining high-cost funds. And, you know, the allocation to the state of West Virginia was about 1.2. I don't know how much will ultimately be awarded or spent.
How are you going to notify the public of what's going on? Because, and, and here, like, they're going to get bombarded with phone calls here. We need a point of contact that is a real point of contact that can answer, real, have answers, real answers to our, the public's questions when this stuff's going on.
Yeah.
Who you can really call and get a real answer from as to what's going on.
Yeah, there's, there's really kind of two phases in terms of, of customer notification. Our construction teams, we, we give our construction teams door hangers to actually place on customers' doors where applicable, where, you know, not intruding on someone's private property, but if you, if you take a heavily populated street, our construction teams are equipped with, with door hangers that we try to get a little bit of an education out ahead of time that states something like fiber is coming. You know, construction is on the way, we appreciate your patience. But then also, our sales...
There is a contact number on that.
Yeah.
So customers can real-time call and ask...
Won't be any kind of mailing or anything to the residents at this point, that you're aware of?
Well, go to the second one.
Well, the, the second one is, and this is the part where it's outside of my lane a little bit, but our construction and engineering schedule is shared with marketing and sales. And so they are trying to time that communication to be in line with when the actual construction takes place. So when they see that, as I mentioned earlier, we plan on customers in July being able to start ordering service, they will have a marketing strategy that will target those customers ahead of time so that they know there is that ability. But as Alison mentioned, there is an address list that we have shared and can share, but we can also vet questions if people, for some reason, their neighbor got a notification, maybe they didn't, we can, we can help with that if needed.
On the marketing side, you know, we're careful about that, because if you telegraph too far in advance where we're going, our competitors will come in and lock in customers of the type of service that you're trying. So we try to time it when we believe that we're going to be, in the near term, making service available such that consumers will say, "I don't want to sign up for your contract cable company, I want to wait for this better service." The other thing that, you know, I think we should be transparent about is that these are our construction targets, and our field construction, a location is not enabled with fiber until the construction is, we don't count it until it is complete. And construction is very fluid for a whole host of reasons. It's impacted by weather, it can be impacted by, you know, resource availability. We can, we can be in an area and have an issue and then just then decide, we don't want to produce idle, so we're going to pivot them somewhere else so that they're working on a project. So while we have these phases, one and two, there could be areas within phase one where, where we decide we're going to put that part of the project on hold and move to a location, you know, an area in phase two and vice versa. And construction is just very fluid, you know, there are sometimes circumstances that come up that we need to address, and we do our best to resolve issues in a timely manner, but we want to make sure that we're using our tools at that capacity. And so there is fluidity, fluidity with, you know, project, how the project unfolds.
How many fiber operators are there in Berkeley County? Just you guys and one other?
No, no, there's multiple.
Yeah.
You have Shentel, you have Globe Fiber, you have Frontier, you have Comcast, there's many.
Comcast has fiber now?
So, so...
Well, would anybody of those piggyback on you all?
Piggyback on us, no. Okay? So meaning...
So what are you going to offer? Just internet and phone service?
Yes. And we offer, we offer television service in a partnership with YouTube TV.
That's what I meant, piggyback. So somebody, you are going to offer television service?
Yeah, we offer through a relationship with YouTube TV. I have it myself. I will tell you, YouTube TV is the most like a linear TV service that you know from like back in the day of all of the over-top providers. It works like, it has a menu, you can scroll through and pick, you know, live programming. It, it, it's not like Netflix in the sense that, you know, Netflix you have to go and search for a very specific program. This has like a content guide. It does also have, by the way, streaming shows that you can watch just like... It does also have, by the way, streaming shows that you can watch, just like Netflix, but it also has, you know, a master's guide and
Is it cheaper than DirecTV?
Well, I don't know what DirecTV is squarely offered at, but I will say, you know, my, my bill was, it's like less than $1.
What? I'd say you're cheaper.
So, I'm not representing what their pricing is, but I can just tell you what I pay.
Okay, so the, the only other thing I wanted to address is the Frontier Verizon merger, because you've probably heard about that. So in September of last year, Frontier and Verizon announced an acquisition where Verizon was going to buy back the state of, of West Virginia from Frontier. They're actually buying the entire company, so all 25 states. It is a reflection of how well Frontier has executed on its fiber to the premises plan because all of the states that they sold us in 2010 and 20, and 2015, which the states we bought in 2015 had a fair amount of fiber. The states that we bought in 2010 essentially had no fiber. We've done such a good job building and deploying fiber that Verizon now wants all those states back. So it's a very positive thing for consumers in the state of West Virginia because it will provide them with more service choice. One thing that our competitors are doing quite effectively is they are offering fiber services or broadband services, you know, if it's a cable company, bundled with wireless service and at a very attractive price points. And consumers like to bundle things to get discounts and also ease of just, you know, paying one company, that sort of thing. This transaction will make that possible for, for consumers, you know, Frontier through Verizon will have a wireless offer to be able to make available to customers. Of course, everyone knows the name Verizon. They were the first in the nation to be deploying fiber under the FiOS brand. Of course, they have, you know, a huge wireless network, both mobile service and fixed wireless service, which is another good complement to wire light, wired service, particularly for more rural communities or locations. There is no impact to our operations while this is going through the approval process. It had, the transaction has to be approved at the federal level and also at a number of states, not all of our states, but in a number of our states, including West Virginia. And we expect that we will get those approvals and that the transaction will close in early 2026. Until then, business as usual, we're separate companies, we are continuing to operate our business and deploy fiber as we have been. Maybe just also to give you a little bit of comfort, Verizon has very publicly stated that it intends to fulfill Frontier's obligations with respect to grants, like what we have with Berkeley County, if we're not finished by 2026 when the transaction closes. And then, of course, our ARDOF commitments and any BEED commitments in the state of West Virginia that we undertake. So, you know, that, that's not going to, they're not going to be left behind as a result of the transaction.
If I could offer just a couple of things, Mr. President, Frontier has been a great partner in this process. Allison has been involved with us from the beginning. You did go out to RFP, you had multiple providers, and there was a litany of folks involved from your team that helped evaluate the vendors that proposed. Kelly Workman at the broadband office in Charleston was great to deal with, but we can't forget Region Nine, Rachel Snavely and her team, David Deemer particularly worked their tail off to make this happen. So I do have one question, Allison. We mentioned the cost to the consumer at the end. I actually believe in the contract, isn't there a maximum that Frontier will go with regard from to the home, like 180 feet or 220 feet?
Oh, it would be closer to like 2,000.
Was it that far?
So, so, I mean, I guess, that's in our, that's in our contract, right? That if there is an unusual drop circumstance and it's atypical for some reason, right? Like you have to cross a sinkhole or there's some river there, you know, there are instances where we may, we reserve the right to seek a contribution from an end user customer. I will tell you in practice, that's what the lawyers, you know, write in the contract, I will tell you in practice that I have not identified a situation across our 25 state footprint where we've incurred, where we've encountered that. So I can't say it wouldn't ever happen, but it would be a very rare circumstance.
So that was, that was the foresight of the commission then and the groups that evaluated all this was to try and protect your constituents. So when the call came to, hey, I want this, well, we'll only come to the middle of the yard. That's not, and there were some, there were some competitors that actually had disclaimers that were much shorter than Frontier and theirs was one of the most attractive because as you well know, there's lots of long driveways in the valley and there's lots of long driveways all over the county. So this wasn't an easy decision and I applaud the commission then and now for having picked such a valuable partner that gets you to today. And you heard them say, in the better part of a year and a half, the project should be completed.
And just maybe to pick up on the request for constituent outreach, right? So there is the, the line that is, the, the number that the people in the community can call during active construction. I should also point out that we, you know, we tested and refined that door hanger. It provides some information to customers, the things that they're, they're concerned about. Like when we dig up the front of their yard and they don't realize that that's the public easement and they're concerned about whether or not it's going to get put back to its, you know, original condition, the, the door hanger addresses that, you know, we endeavor to return the property to the condition that we found it in as good or better. Again, just consumers often don't realize that that's not their land, it's a, you know, public easement. So, you know, they can call with questions about that. Of course, Gary has my telephone number, he uses it, you know, he doesn't overuse it, but obviously he uses it. You're welcome to share it with the commissioners, you're welcome to reach out to me directly. You know, we try to be as responsive as possible, sometimes we have to do a little bit of research, but to the extent that you're getting, you know, customer constituent questions, you know, we're happy to help you provide the information that, that gives them a better understanding of what's happening in the community and what the timeline looks like.
We're looking forward, you know, we've been telling the folks in the valley in particular for about the last three years, it's coming, you know, stand by, you know, so we're going to light it up.
I get a call every month, well, I'm still waiting on my fiber, Steve. What are you going on now? So this will really help me the next call, so.
One of our decisions throughout this process, especially in the very beginning, was identifying our schools that we have in that region during COVID, a lot of those children had to drive to the school or they would put a hotspot on a bus and locate it somewhere. A lot of those kids did not have access to fiber to do their work, to do their homework. So it was, that area that was identified was really and truly presented to the families, hopefully to help them with their education in particular. And, and we also have some other areas in the county that need, need this test done to, to see what type of services are available, like on the northeast part of the county, we've got some areas that are
That was my question because will this merger affect, because the future plans are, once we get this, their space done, what are we going to do to the rest of Berkeley County, the eastern part of the county, everything east of North Mountain and get it all through the whole county? So you don't, you don't think this merger will affect that in any way, shape or form, do you?
It will be positive because Verizon is a much larger company than we are, is a much better capitalized company, they have better access to funding. So, you know, obviously
There's still going to be state funds available for the next phase, I would think.
Remember, those state funds are federal funds.
Right, that are handed down to
So, so if you've watched the shift of the federal government,
Yeah.
Let's leave it at that.
Yeah.
So these folks here are definitely not going to commit, they're going to say that their, their new parent company is, has deeper pockets and has a greater capital vision or has good a capital vision. So I would like to think the answer to your question is, no, it's not going to slow, Steve, but we really don't know.
But, you know, to, to, to maybe elaborate on that a little bit, I mean, there are locations that are too expensive to serve for private industry without a subsidy. That's why programs like ARPA, the IIJA, which is the BEED funding, and then of course, you know, Capital Projects Funds also, that's why they've been, ARDOF have been made available because there's a broad recognition that private capital alone can't meet the need of these very high cost locations. We have engaged in that process, we understand the importance of reaching these locations, we only deploy fiber, and so we look to put together projects that can be funded that are as competitive as possible to reach as many people as possible. So, you know, we want to continue to work in partnership with you. If there are particular regions across Berkeley County that you, you know, have a particular interest in, please, you know, share them with Gary, Gary and I can have a discussion about them, I'm happy to look at whatever. Because again, this is our, this is our mission. I mean, we, we call it building gigabit America. And you mentioned the, the COVID pandemic, and I will say, during that period of time, during 2019, 2020, that was exactly when we as a company were putting together our strategic vision for where we wanted to go over the, you know, next 10, 15, 20 years. And, you know, we had the experience with DSL, we had the experience with our customers and our, you know, the students within the service territory, within our service territory who did not have the connectivity that they needed. And that was a big influence for why, why we said we are shifting to a 100% fiber to the premises strategy for our future. And, you know, we have invested over, since 2021, I mean, literally billions of dollars of our private capital across the country in order to achieve that. We're really proud of that. We haven't reached everywhere, we are not going to be able to reach everywhere, we're not going to be able to reach some places without a public subsidy. We're working through that process to try to make sure that fiber gets to as many people as possible.
Well, in Berkeley County, you are reaching though the most remote part of our county with this phase.
Right, that's why these are so important.
The rest of it's going to be very easy in my mind.
Those decisions were all based on what the industry refers to as passes, address pass, so it was driven by numbers too.
We thank you for what you're doing now.
Further questions? All right, thank you for the update and, and it's very informative and appreciating, and we're looking forward to services as we've agreed upon.
Thank you so much for giving us the time. And of course, we'll be giving, as the project unfolds over the rest of the year, we'll be giving Gary periodic updates, which he can share.
I'm going to hold you to that $80 a month price too.
I only told you what I paid.
Thank you, Allison. Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you.
That's right there, huh, Steve?
Yeah, real good stuff.
I don't even paint my yard.
You don't?
No.
I've had it for several weeks now.
All right, next up, Chad Weinbrunner, Deputy County Administrator, Bid Award Group for Health Benefits. Good morning, sir.
Morning. So, remember, about six weeks ago, we went out to bid for new employee health coverage. That was prompted to happen after our pre-renewal meeting with Highmark came in. They quoted us about a 25% renewal at that time. And after conversations with them, we believed that there wasn't going to be a lot of negotiation within that number. We had been through that process a few years where you had set your budget, we came in for pre-renewal meetings and we got very large numbers from Highmark. The year prior, we were able to back off that renewal a bit. We shifted more risk onto the county commission by increasing HRA and we shifted a bit of cost onto the employee by increasing deductibles. We knew this year there was not going to be an opportunity to do that again. And we went out to RFP. Through that RFP process, we received six bids. Most of those bids had multiple plans within them to look through. We did end up bringing three providers in to interview. Through the process, it began to stand out to us that one of the things that we really needed to focus on and look at was a self-funded option. The traditional fully funded model just didn't really seem to be working for us anymore. There was not a lot of cost containment in there and the annual increases were getting almost impossible to budget year over year. Healthcare as a cost alone seems to be risible, is rising faster than any other cost out there. And after employee salaries, the single biggest expense that you pay on a manual basis is your healthcare coverage. We looked at the numbers and we realized that remaining fully insured would most likely in a few years down the road put us in a position where health coverage began to affect decisions for giving employee raises, hiring employees, or, you know, potentially even having to eliminate employees, God forbid. So cost containment became important, but at the same time as thinking of cost containment, we needed to focus on a plan that was really good for the employee. We did not ever want to do cost containment at the expense of the employee. And in fact, one of the things we looked for was a way to improve employee experience. So as we looked and, and started to learn more and more about self-funded options and how they work, it became really obvious to us that we needed to take a really deep look at a self-funded option and that we could benefit from it. Two of the three firms that we interviewed brought us self-funded options. And the firm that we ended up liking the most is a brokerage named, called One Digital out of Winchester, Virginia, that offered us a self-funded option on a captive, and I'll explain what that is, but through a company called Pareto Health. You do your property casualty insurance through a risk pool, the captive is very much the same. Being part of Pareto's self-insurance captive would give you a lot of opportunity to limit yourself to risk exposure. It would limit yourself to premium increases, it would also limit yourself to rate increases being done on a per employee rate per year based on their claims experience. We would purchase that stop loss insurance as part of the premium. And when we would go into renewals every year, the only dollars that you would be eligible for increase would be on that stop loss insurance. And then there may be some very minor changes to administrative fees. The insurance that we looked at through Pareto, we were very concerned about quality of care. Obviously, the Blue Cross Blue Shield network that we've been on for a long time is one of the largest networks in the country. In fact, I believe it is the largest network in the country. The Pareto, the self-insurance through Pareto is going to be on the Cigna network, which is also an extremely large network and often referred to as one of the, the big four. We looked at local care, we've validated that Cigna is accepted everywhere that we are going to go. We plugged in some folks on the review committee, plugged in their local doctors and pediatricians and validated that their physician did in fact accept Cigna. We walked away from that exercise very comfortable that, you know, number one, we were not going to force any employees out of having to change their doctors or be turned away at any of the local hospitals they prefer to use. Looking at the second to the employees is, you know, looking at the rate structure, obviously now we would be going, you know, if we do this, we go into a self-funded plan where we are basically the insurer, we're paying the claims as they come in. We looked at our claims experience, we looked at the stop loss experience, we figured out, you know, if we expect to pay what, you know, what we expect to pay a year in claims, which is about 2.5 to 2.7 million dollars in claims. Those numbers are probably going to be a bit lower, and I'll explain that here in a second, versus what we need to pay for our stop loss insurance. And those two numbers together, that stop loss buys you a guarantee that you will not pay above 3.6 million dollars in claims per year. Currently with the presentation with, with Highmark's proposed renewal, they came in just below 7%. I think their renewal, their premium was going to be about 2.95, but through their health reimbursement account that we had devised to offset risk, you were on the hook for up to 2.2 million dollars of additional claim. Now, the likelihood of seeing that entire risk was low, but we were paying out well over $600,000 a year in HRA historically over the past three to four years. Through this process, we worked very close with the ambulance authority who has a little over 100 employees and I believe about 55 of them insured. We were able to break out their HRA, it was a little harder for us to break out the claims experience, but we know that our full claims experience that we've quoted, that, you know, we have experienced through Highmark, we have a rough idea of how much the ambulance authority has of that claims experience. So backing out that number, which we believe to be about between 300 and 400,000 dollars, we kind of gives us a good idea of where we're going to end up. Running through these numbers, working through the, the proposal from Pareto with the stop loss gives us an opportunity on year one to provide our employees with a very progressive health plan, what we feel is very good coverage, to set up plans that are nearly identical to their current plans with Highmark, their deductibles will be the same as we currently have right now. One big thing that will change is we will no longer have a $9,100 deductible. Maximum out of pockets will go to Maximum out of pockets will go to double the deductible. So $1,500 and $3,000 with maximum amount of pockets of $3,000 and $6,000. That will be an immediate change to the employee. Another immediate change to the employee will be the third party administrator that we partner with through Pareto is a company called Wellnet that offers a, they call it a concierge medical service. We were very impressed with their presentation. Pareto brought them in as part of the interview. And I wish Mr. Whitaker was here because I know it impressed him. But they really, they, they made us all kind of question it when they said that on average, they answer their phones within six seconds, right Gary?
Yeah, I tried to correct him. You mean six minutes? And she clearly let me know six seconds.
They answer their phones for, for, for all member inquiries within six seconds. Their call center is located out of Pennsylvania. Everything is within the United States. They also specialize in proactive member outreach. So if they see claims trends for any one employee start to go, you know, say a new diabetic claim comes up and it hits, Wellnet will proactively reach out to that employee and begin offering them education and begin, you know, working within the local network to, to explain, you know, where they may want to, to search out their treatment. Especially as they're still working through the deductibles, it will not only have an impact on the amount of claims we pay, but it'll have a direct impact on the amount of deductible the employee pays as well. So we took a long time. We vetted these. We had our, our, our top two. We're very close to one another, but we felt at the end that working with Pareto, working in, limiting our risk within the captive model and the partnership with Wellnet, the, the third party administrator, we were very, very comfortable with all of those, especially with this being our first venture into the self-funded plan. We know that worst case scenario on year one, you remain flat. Is your dollar exposure? We expect that to be better. We expect that to be a good bit better. We do not expect to hit our high claims. Now, of course, that can happen at any given time. You know, we learned a, a lot about claims and the ebb and flow of those things. And you have a relatively young workforce here, which is great. It, it drives down your exposure, your overall exposure. But some of the things that it does open you up to are things like childbirth and all that, which, you know, premature childbirth, those can be very large claims. But having that stop loss insurance there ensures that on the employee side, you will pay no more than $150,000 a year in those claims before your stop loss kicks in. The other great thing about working with Pareto and the captive model of insurance is there is a term in the insurance industry within the stop loss model called a laser. And basically what a laser allows is that if this year I were to have a catastrophic claim and our stop loss insurance would be $150,000 per employee, if I were to have a catastrophic claim, the stop loss insurer could come back next year, target me and say, we will continue to cover your entire organization for $150,000. But Mr. Weinbrunner's stop loss insurance has to go up to $500,000 based on his claims experience. Through the, the captive model with Pareto and that shared risk, they guarantee no lasers for the life of the plan. So once we initiate this, they will do our final, pending your approval, they will do a final risk analysis. And we will be told if they do not institute any lasers at the start of the plan, they will not institute a laser throughout. They have an opportunity to do it one time when we sign up. As of right now, they've indicated that we should not expect any. But obviously there will be a final review, you know, prior to any contract. That is a massive benefit and another way that we can predictably, we can predict costs on a year to year model. Let me talk real quick. I just, brain fart. We, we know and-
I'm supposed to dance. I'm sorry.
We, we are on an extremely compressed timeline. Throughout this whole entire process, even issuing the RFP, we knew that there was going to be a, a lot of challenge getting everything done for a July 1 go live date. So one of the very first questions that we asked Pareto, One Digital and Wellnet when we met with them is can we realistically meet this date? And they have assured us that it will not be a problem. They will be here onsite for employee education, for onboarding. We will also be bringing in for the first time an E-tool called Employee Navigator that comes at no cost as part of this service. We will move all of our employee onboarding to a digital format. So when open enrollment or new employees come in, we will ensure on our end that they all have their access to Employee Navigator. But then it will allow them to take that information home. If they're a new employee, they can take that information home. They can sit at the table with their wife. They can build their plans and they can decide what's right for them there, submit it through the portal and then it, it goes directly to the carrier. It lets us know a new plan's been submitted. We'll have an approval process on our end. But it, it takes out the cumbersome, time-consuming paper processes that we have been traditionally doing. That software is maintained by the provider. That's not software for us to purchase. We don't have to maintain that. We don't have to house it. It is a portal between the employee and the provider. We also have a portal in as the employer to be able to see it. Data analytics will be available to you through this on, on a real-time basis. You will see the claims coming in. You will see what they are. You will see how your group is performing in, in real-time, which also gives us an opportunity in real-time to work on employee health population management. If we see that we are trending in one direction, if we have a lot of musculoskeletal, we can work through Wellnet and Pareto to find new options for at-home physical therapy. We know already that, you know, I think every employer has a high incidence of diabetic claims. We can choose to target and, and figure out how much more we can do for group education and call saving measures for diabetic claims. There are some concierge, concierge service for cancer claims. I mean, we know at this point in time that our employees unfortunately will be affected by cancer. How we support them is extremely important. Pareto has partners with a lot of third-party vendors. They come to us at no cost to be able to work with an employee and sort of escort them through that journey so that they don't feel out on their own, especially as they, the diagnosis is brand new and the world feels like it's closing in around them. To be able to have somebody reach out and sort of walk them through that journey could make a lot of difference. We- One Digital and, and the, the broker Melanie Hitchen will be with us and available all the time, working as a partner side by side. We will obviously utilize that relationship very, very much upfront. Let's talk about plan construction for just a few moments. While we will have to wait for full plan construction following your approval of the contract. Right now Pareto and One Digital have provided us with three plan structures. And it is a $1,500 for individual, a $3,000 for family. And then we will have a new high deductible HSA option, which will be a $3,000 and $6,000, which would replace your $9,100 high deductible now. So even on the high deductible plan would save the employee family $3,100 on year one. We're talking primary care visits, $25 copays, specialist visits, $50 copays, preventative care, your annual physical is covered at 100%. Under the traditional plans, you know, three tiers of pharmacy. So your, your tier one would be your, your in-network preferred with the right drugs, generics, $10 copay, 40 for tier two and 65 for tier three. Those are all numbers that are very, very competitive with what we're paying right now and what we're seeing, what we saw across all of the bids that came into us. Finally, the last part of this was for the ancillaries. One Digital also provided a quote for the ancillary insurances. They're a company called Ameritas for dental and vision. Their rates are unchanged on the dental from what you pay right now with Blue Edge, with Highmark. The vision is actually a $1.50 less per employee per month. But our vision insurance is the, the smallest of all the insurances you pay for. I think the currently $7.70 and $0.70 a month, I believe, if I remember correctly, per employee. Our life insurance would remain with the Hartford. The, that is, One Digital's group that they recommended for us is the Hartford. So we would be moving three lines and maintaining one line with the Hartford.
That, that's an inordinate amount of information to digest. The moral to the story is the thing to underlying tone is you have an opportunity to break away from the model that's, that you've used since you got into the business way back when it was PEIA and new chains and so on and so forth. There is a trend. There's opportunity. The self-funded plans, when they first evolved, I'm not going to call it volatile, but, but had concerns. We've talked to several other jurisdictions that have done what, this isn't Chad's, Chad's presenting, but this was Mr. Whitaker, Brandon Truman from the ambulance authority, Chad, myself, Alia Penny, a group set through all of this. So when we, when we spoke to folks who have done what it is we're recommending to you to do, they're like, it was one of the greatest decisions we've ever made, right? It puts you in the driver's seat of a, a significant part of public monies that you spend to support your employees, your human capital. It gives you insight into their usage. It helps you tailor plans. It helps you provide direction. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the county commission to be progressive. I recently, my wife went from PEIA into the open market and they have something similar to this. They're self-funded. And I got to be witness to an onboarding process that's automated and completely between the employee and a portal where we sat at our kitchen table and made the decision for our family as insurance and hit submit and all of a sudden it was deductible from her pay and so on and so forth. So I think it just evolves you and your employees into what I think is, is a good solution for them. And one thing Chad didn't touch on is this isn't a, a single year, hey, let's make this decision and we'll read. This is a, a long-term, well-executed plan. And you're only going to get better as years move forward. So is it, is there opportunity for risk? Yes. Do I believe those risks outweigh the return and reward for, for a good healthcare service and premium savings? I don't believe so. So speaking as one of the committee members, I think it makes all the sense in the world for the commission to, to take that step and, and really get into something that's different, kind of break the mold and go from there. You've, you've faced nothing but increases over the last several years. And, you know, when you're, when you see a 25% increase, turn around and come in in a sealed scenario of 6.9, right? So you went from the initial 25%, no negotiation, but they came in at 6.9. You were at 4% last year. That 4% was, was catered based on some policy changes too. So it wasn't like we negotiated what started at 10% last year down to four. We got to four because you modified policy. So all of those decisions, when you deal with a fully funded insurance company, you, you take their word for, for a lot of the things that are said because you, the information on the backend isn't yours. When you're self-funded, it's granular. You see every, now you don't see the employee and their, their data, but you see all the transactional data. So you understand what's going on. Some of the other things that become available to you in this process is your prescription rebates, right? So you may or may not know they exist, but they're in there. So there's, there's prescription rebates, potentially six figures or greater that are going to come back. I just, I think it's time for a change. As you turn, and Eddie has said it a million times, we turn over every rock we can, meaning you, the county commission, turn over every rock you can to be efficient and effective with tax dollars. Well, this is another rock overturned. And I think that it lends opportunity for you to make better decisions in the future driven by data that you never had before. So we're only first and foremost trying to provide the best opportunity for healthcare to your employees and two, make it affordable.
Yeah. And, and being one of the few agencies in the area that, that cover our, our employees with the, with the insurance, healthcare insurance, this is a, this is very expensive. I mean, it is. Everybody, I think everybody is aware that healthcare costs are very expensive. And they're, they've been traditionally going up. You know, we worked with, with Highmark to be able to keep those numbers, you know, down as much as we can over the last several years negotiating back and forth. And quite honestly, I, I think it's a good business decision to take a look and see what else there is out there, you know? So I know it's a lot of work, but at the same time, we, we have to look out for what's best. So I, I do have some questions, Chad. Number one is how, if, if we transition to this, how will this affect the employee? How, and I heard, what you answered one of the questions I had was about the copays. And the other one was about deductibles. You answered, you answered those questions. But also during this transition, if we, if we do this, what about pre-existing conditions? What about scheduled surgeries? Hospital choices, doctor choices?
So hospital and doctor choices should not be an issue. We have looked and looked and looked and worked with Wellnet and believe that Cigna, another, a large network is going to be available and accepted. We do not believe the employees will have an issue with hospital and, and physician choices. The pre-existing conditions or pre-authorizations, the moment we begin open enrollment, we will instruct employees, if you have a pre-authorization, our intention is to pay that, but we need you to get with Wellnet immediately. You need to identify that on your open enrollment so that we know it's coming. We have no, and that's, that's the easiest way to handle that. We've asked a lot of those questions through this process because that was one very big concern is if somebody has a surgery pending in July or August that's already been pre-authorized, is this going to cancel that? You were the insurer. You're paying the claims. We need to work with Wellnet to say, we're going to continue to honor that claim. Ultimately, that's your decision. It's not an insurance company's decision. But putting that on the radar for Wellnet, knowing it's coming, is important. That way, that can be flagged and there is, there's no stumbling when they present their insurance card at their physician.
From, from what I understand previously with this type of business is everybody was lumped in, just like car insurance, basically. The state of West Virginia, you know, folks somewhere else in the state, you become a high risk because of what other people do. This is not like that. This is based on what happens within our organization.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
It is primarily based on what happens in our organization. And for your stop loss insurance, it is based on what happens in the captive that we are a part of as a whole, which guarantees your cost containment. But 90% of your cost is controlled within your organization.
I had an advantage of attending the ambulance authority's strategic planning meeting on Tuesday. We probably spent a half hour talking about their health coverage and they're going to follow suit if the county approves this today to do the same for their employees as well. And so, and I, I had some questions earlier this morning before we met with you guys. And first of all, I want to thank the committee for all the time and effort you all put into this. It was, I know it was a big task to take on and it's a very critical task to take on too for our employees. But I appreciate everyone's input and I got a really good feel for it. And I've reached out to other people that I've, I've known for a long time in the health industry and talked to them as well. And I think this is certainly the trend to go is to self-insured programs. There's no question about that for the future of the county's financial situation. So, and, and I want to say to Lynn and her organization how great you all have been to us over the years and appreciate the fact, the service that you all provided to the county of these many years. So thank you for that. But I, I do think it's time to move on and, and go to this program. And I, I'm willing to make that motion if, whenever you're ready to do it.
You have any questions?
I don't. It's a lot, but I think-
I feel confident. I feel confident, yeah. I feel confident that the employees are going to be taken care of and, and that was our, that's our main concern is our employees, of course. So I, I feel confident they'll be taken care of.
Second.
So I, I would make that motion that we adopt this new proposed health plan and effective July 1st of this year and move forward. So thank you.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there, there's no way we have got here without the work of that gentleman right there. The, the committee did do a lot, but Chad and Aleah and Penny have worked their keisters off, but kudos to Chad and thanks for the help.
Well, I got to add one more person because Brandon Truman, Chief of the Ambulance Authority, was instrumental, just especially at the start with his background in insurance and this has been 100%, not only a 45-day masterclass in insurance, but it's, it's been one of the best team efforts that I've been a part of, so.
Well, we certainly thank you for it.
I know, I sat in on one afternoon session and soon found out that you all knew more about healthcare than I ever desired to know. I had a few questions about how it would have hit the employees and you answered them, I think, very satisfactory and thank you for your work and move on.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank you for everything you've done to help me through medicine. For you chefs that work with Allen and some with the vice. I do appreciate all of your efforts and everything that you've done for me for all your work.
All right, next up, Carrie Wine. Your first property for law enforcement.
This one's easy. You have a, you have a, a captain that has retired. The sheriff is, has the intent to ceremonially donate or give his service weapon to him. You, as you well know, you need to declare said service weapon surplus and process the correct paperwork and move forward. So they're asking for a 1 XR 929 millimeter, serial number listed in your memo, be declared surplus.
All right. Anybody have any questions on that? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Very good. Proper motion and second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. Wish them the very best.
Thank you. And we do need executive session for legal matters, please, sir.
Very good.
With no decision to be made.
Are there any, let the record show there is nobody else from the public here today. We do have need for executive session with no action to be taken.
Legal matters.
I need a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into an executive session.
So, so we're in an executive session.
All right, we're back in executive session. There will be no action taken. It's a motion to recess.
I'll make a motion to recess.
We are in recess.
It comes from that side.